I call this meeting the Tacoma Park City Council's order. Please call the roll. Where's the clerk?
You started without a clerk.
It's just not done at my side.
Barb, could you fill in for us, please?
I'm Jared Boyer. He can still be present.
You want me to call the roll?
We'll wait a minute.
Boy, Barb, you haven't even left yet.
We're at that point in the meeting where the clerk calls the roll.
Why do you call? Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Danis Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All right. Welcome back, everybody, from a nice, long break. I hope everybody enjoyed their August.
Yes, yes.
It was nice to have a break. Now that we're back, we've got some upcoming meetings, and I'll just point out a couple of upcoming agenda items. On next Monday, September 10th, we'll be joined by County Councilmember Mark Elrich, who comes and talks with us, oh, I guess, once a year, and so he'll talk about whatever's going on at the county. That's always an interesting conversation, and we know from having had a number of those conversations that we need to schedule a little bit longer than 15 minutes. So we've scheduled it for about 45 minutes, because we always engage him in a long, interesting conversation. We have a resolution next week establishing a city manager selection committee and appointing members to the committee. I imagine we will not be appointing all the members, but we'd like to get that committee up and running. We also have a work session scheduled with the Community Preservation and Development Corporation on their request for a payment and lieu of taxes agreement for 7777 Maple Avenue, the Essex House. Two days later, on Wednesday, September 12th, the city council will be touring the New Ave, New Hampshire Avenue, at 5:00 PM, and that is going to be, I think, a two- or three-hour tour, including some food of some kind, since it's during the dinner hour. And I'm not sure of the details, but details will be forthcoming, anybody who's interested, the next Wednesday at 5:00. And do we have a place that people are going to meet?
We don't have that yet. We'll get that information.
Okay. Information will be coming out about that. The following Tuesday, not Monday, but Tuesday, since Rosh Hashanah will be taking place when we would be meeting on Monday. Tuesday, the 18th, we have a number of Tacoma Junction items. We have a report on the Food Truck Pilot Program.
Yes.
And a number of ordinances for the various testing pieces for the Junction, and a resolution endorsing the Ethan Allen Avenue Gateway Streetscape Design and authorizing solicitation of project funds. Also, on Tuesday, the 18th, we'll have a work session continuing our discussion on the proposal to establish council role in department director hires and establishing residency requirements for department directors, city manager, and deputy city manager. And finally, Monday, the 24th, we have a public hearing on CDBG grants. And that covers a number of meetings in September. And then I just want to note, I issued a proclamation today recognizing National Preparedness Month, and I'll just read the "Therefore" part of the proclamation. Therefore, be resolved that I, Bruce L. Williams, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, hereby proclaim September 2012 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all residents, families, and organizations and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared society. So I hope everybody will be prepared. At this point, we will open with public comment period, and maybe if we can go first, we have a special visitor with us, Joyce Neumeyer, President of Washington Adventist Hospital, and she's here to talk about the Certificate of Need process and what has happened today. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having me here this evening. I promised that I would keep you updated with the most recent information, and it doesn't get any more recent than this. I only received a copy of this, it was a little more than two hours ago. Commissioner Barbara McLean, with the Maryland Healthcare Commission, has issued her recommendation related to our CON, and her recommendation is to deny the CON, to relocate. I am obviously very deeply disappointed in this. It is not a final decision. The full commission vote will take place on October 18. I can tell you, the recommendation is 181 pages long, so I haven't even had an opportunity to read through the whole thing. There was a portion that is fairly near the front of it, that I did write down here so that I could share it with you. She said, "I have concluded, based on the weight of the evidence, that replacement is likely to be a more cost-effective alternative than replacement and renovation of the existing WA facilities." So she meant in the existing location versus another location. Commissioner McLean further adds, "I hope that AHC," meaning Adventist Healthcare, "and WA, Washington Adventist Hospital, "will seriously and constructively consider the issues raised in my recommended decision and promptly move to develop a new plan to achieve the important objectives addressed in this application so that the future of both WA and AHC can be assured." Now, what all those recommendations are, I don't know yet. Haven't read through the entire recommendation, and they don't give you a Cliff's Notes with it. You have to read through the whole thing. But I had promised you that I would update you just as soon as possible, and so that's exactly what I'm doing. I mean, I'm happy to answer what questions I can, but do note that, since I haven't read it, there may be a lot that I can't share. We are going to be going through the recommendation in great detail and determining our response to the commission, and we'll have a go-forward plan.
Would it be fair to characterize the opinion as probably making everyone unhappy, because it says, "No, you can't move as you requested, but you're not viable where you are"?
I believe that was clearly stated, and I can tell you, I'm certainly unhappy with it. I mean, I do think that it's an interesting position, and she very clearly acknowledged that the current situation is not sustainable, but has denied the plan as it was presented.
And so it's essentially reapply with some different arguments?
That's a reasonable assumption, based on what we've seen so far. I'm not sure exactly how. I'll summarize it after I have an opportunity to read the entire report, but that is not a surprising conclusion.
Thanks. Any questions from my colleagues?
Lots of questions, but I don't think they're going to get answers tonight. Yeah, look forward to having you come back and talk about it in more detail when you're a little more familiar with the 181 pages.
Absolutely. I mean, I will come back and tell you what I know, what I've been able to pull out of the report and what our plan is. I mean, I may be here every meeting for a while, I don't know. But as soon as I have any new information, I will come to the next available meeting, and I will keep the mayor informed so that nothing is a surprise to you all. My worst fear is I don't want you to read anything about this in the newspaper before I can get to you, so that's definitely our plan.
And the city will be receiving a copy. I believe it's going to the city attorney, but that has not arrived yet.
Is there a timeline for making it publicly available as well, the commissioner's report?
The commissioner's report, as I understand it, although I was given a copy of it and didn't go look for it myself, I understand it is on the Maryland Healthcare Commission's website already. On my copy, it lists the folks who were included in the distribution, and it lists the City of Tacoma Park. I would assume that it goes to Ms. Silber, but...
Yeah, she's received everything else so far.
Okay. So I'm assuming that she'll have received this, too. If for some reason she doesn't, I'm happy to provide her a copy, so...
Right. So anybody who wants to read the 181 pages can go to the Maryland Healthcare Commission website. Councilmember Schultz?
I just want to say that I look forward to really a constructive engagement with yourself and the Adventist Healthcare leadership. I think we started with that a little bit, with a meeting, I guess it was in July, just before we adjourned for the summer. I wasn't part of that meeting, but as you know, I feel very strongly that the only way we're going to come up with some kind of a solution here is going to be through cooperation, and I really look forward to our doing that as much as we can.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree with you more on that. Anything else I can address for any of you?
When do you foresee coming back to the council to talk to us about it?
Well, as soon as I have any additional information. I believe that I was, on my calendar, I know that I had promised several of you, including you, that I would be back to introduce you to some new folks on our staff. You remember Dean T., he's been here before. He is no longer with Washington Adventist, and his replacement, Amy Carrier, as well as Mark Bloom, has joined our team. He's from the Food and Drug Administration, retired from there after a long and successful career, and has joined us to help facilitate the memorandum of understanding that we have about the future of the research that we'll be doing with the FDA. And so I wanted to introduce you to both of those folks, and I believe it's at your next meeting that it's on my calendar to bring them back and do that. So I will still plan on doing that and then give you an update at that point. But rest assured, if I have substantive information before then, I'll call the mayor immediately. We have each other's numbers in our phones, and I try to be sure that you don't learn anything in the press before you hear it from me.
Okay.
And we appreciate your taking the time to come to us so quickly after you got the decision and giving us whatever you have.
Well, I didn't want to pass up the opportunity, since I knew where you would all be. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Other public comment. Mr. Lovelace in the back.
My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4, your official peace delegate. One thing I want to bring up is, which is very important to me, is only 63 days left before it's time to vote. I think we should get our friends and our relatives all aware of this. It's an important election coming up. Not that any election's unimportant, but this is an official presidential election. We should get everybody out there to vote. We want to keep our draw, if we want to keep our healthcare, and keep what we've got, and get a little more than we have. I think we should get people out there and get them voting. Another thing I want to do is let people know that, you know, I think somewhere around September 9th, I think, a Sunday, isn't that around the Folk Festival time this year?
It could be.
I think it is. We have a Tacoma Park Folk Festival, and I think everybody should come down and look at it. I've been to quite a few of them, and they are awesome. They are awesome. When Tacoma Park puts on a show, a party, they know how to do it. They always put on a good parties. Another thing I want to thank Terry Siemens for is for supporting me in my invitation and getting to the White House to speak on the, possibly to speak on the Healthcare Act. I've got an official invitation to go down.
Wow.
And that's tomorrow. And I will also, also, it's very important to me now, because of talking about the White House, is to get a decent person to stay in the White House. I want to see Obama in, and I want to see some decent healthcare come in, because if we don't get something, if we don't get things changed, my life could come to an end if we lose our access to healthcare. And if I can get access to it, everybody should be able to get access to it. Everybody should get access to it. I want to thank the All Adult Waiver Program for what they've done for me health-wise, and also for putting my name, submitting my name for admission to the White House, because they said they know how active I am, they appreciate my work as a peace delegate, and they want to see me down there. And I want to thank Dana Smith, who's coming down with me tomorrow. She has to be down at my house sometime around 6:00. You know what? We're leaving our house at 7:00 to get down there. Other than that, she's not worried about it. And yes, we can make a difference, we can. The main thing is get out and vote. When is the deadline for voting, I want to know, to register? Deadline to register to vote, that should be coming up.
It's in six weeks.
Because other people want to know, too. So if we can find out when that is, we should do it. And thank you very much, everybody, for the support you've been giving me over the years and everything else. I thank you very much. So remember, everybody, get out, bear, and vote. Vote, vote. We have to do it. 63 more short days left, so please, do not forget it. It's very important to me. It's very important to you, whether you know it or not. Your high may depend on it. So please, act responsibly, act like an illegal adult American. Adult passage into American adulthood is voting, not drinking, not drugging. It's voting and taking an active responsibility in your community. So please, participate in your community, come out to the Folk Festival and vote. That is community contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Smith, is that an old light or is that a new light?
It's an old light.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I've missed this over these last, this last month, so here I am again. I want to underline Mayor Williams' comments about September being Emergency Preparedness Month. It's really, especially in the wake, pun intended, of the terrible, I guess, tropical storm. It just turned out to be a hurricane for a minute, but it sure devastated the Gulf again. Having a plan and a kit are the two most important things that you can do. And next week, I'm going to go into what a plan looks like for a family, and actually what a kit looks like. My main thing is the flashlight, and I know twice it's happened to me, it's not going to happen a third time. You've got to know where the flashlight is when all the lights go out. If you can't put your hand on it, you're in trouble. So total cave darkness is no fun to try and find your flashlight. Also, I'm going to underline what Mr. Lovelace said. For the umpteenth time, the Tacoma Park Folk Festival is taking place this Sunday, that would be September the 9th, at Tacoma Park Middle School. It's great music, great dancing, great food, great people, and it's going, this year, I think these are new hours. I thought it was 11 to 5, but this year it's 10:30 to 6:30, so I believe it's been extended a little bit. There's a free shuttle bus from Tacoma Metro and from Montgomery College, but most of the people I'm speaking to tonight can walk to the Folk Festival. It's walkable. This is also brings me to major gold stars. This first council meeting in September, they're going to the Tacoma Park Newsletter. Everybody in the city should have gotten this newsletter delivered to their house via United States Postal Service on Saturday. The gold stars are going to Virginia Myers, the editor. This is one of the most important communications that you receive from the city, and the September issue should have, should be read from cover to cover. This is very special, because on the inside, in living color, I know people are going to say it costs too much, but I'm sure Ginny cut a deal, the whole Folk Festival, everything that's happening, every time, every stage, every place, is inside. That will really help you maneuver and find out what you want to listen to. The other special attraction that you only get this time is the Recreation Department's class session from September to December. Everything that you want to do in the City of Tacoma Park, recreation-wise, from toddlers to seniors, is in this document. It's something that you want to have in your home and look at it often. Let's see, now I've lost my place in my, I've got to tell you, my computer crashed tonight, so I had to go back to the old kind of computer, and it looks like handwriting, so I'm struggling a little bit. Tacoma Park has many hidden treasures, but the newsletter is one of the crown jewels, great gold stars for a continued job well done, to keep our residents well informed. I'm also going to give Sherman Avenue huge gold stars. That would be Sherman, Sheridan, Carroll, and Hancock, for the umpteenth, this is another umpteenth, Labor Day picnic, annual birthday celebration, and about 40 adults versus kids super dodgeball game. It isn't often when one gets to experience children from two and a half years old through the teenage years, playing nicely with their parents and a few grandparents, making the rules up as the game goes. What a joy it is to be a part of such a celebration of life. Great job. This year, this year, finally, the adults won two out of three dodgeball games, and I believe this is the first time that's ever happened, and I think they had to have a couple of ringers to do that. What a fun time we had. It's just, when you sit back and watch it happening, to look at 40 kids and adults, their parents, actually enjoying one another in the field of play without anybody going "wah, wah, wah," it's just, it's a real thrill. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
Sure that wasn't the dodgeball that hit your computer?
No, it wasn't the dodgeball. Listen, I only played for a little bit. I usually get banged out pretty fast.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick note, I thank Mr. Lovelace for bringing up issues of the election. I thought I'd note that in the Republican Party platform, it specifically calls out communities like Tacoma Park, and that it calls for the denial of federal funding for sanctuary cities. So that was a very clear poke at places like us, and I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Councilmember Mail. Councilmember Mail, thank you for telling me that. Now I decided I'm going to vote for Obama. I just got back from a, just sort of personal comment from about two and a half weeks traveling in upstate New York, probably one of the more beautiful parts of the United States, and I was struck in driving through countless small towns, state parks, and places like that, by the signs of what the recession, the Great Recession, has done to many small communities. A lot of small towns were, are almost vacant, because the houses are empty, for-sale signs, industrial plants that have been abandoned. And it's, it helped me to realize how fortunate we are here in Tacoma Park, by virtue of the fact that we're part of the greater Washington metropolitan area, which is one of the strongest metropolitan economies in the United States, and relatively low unemployment, because a lot of these places are just, their tax base is just totally gone. But at the same time, we also had the opportunity to drive through several communities scattered around areas such as the Finger Lakes region and up along Lake Ontario, and up in the Adirondack State Park, which were really strikingly beautiful communities, where I saw a lot of historic preservation of homes, and really innovative solutions to downtowns to help make them, to be revitalized, if you will, to be really functional. And when you travel and you see these contrasts, it's educational, it makes you think about why some places seem to succeed and others seem to just kind of want to, just can't sustain themselves. One of the prettiest places, I think maybe one of the prettiest towns I've ever seen, was Cooperstown, New York, which happens to be the location of the Baseball Hall of Fame, where I spent a day and a half wandering the halls and learning about the many facets of the fabulous game of baseball, of which I'm a devotee. But it's probably also Cooperstown, one of the prettiest towns I've ever seen. It's named after the author, James Fenimore Cooper, who has a, there's a museum there as well. That whole area up there along the Finger Lakes and central New York is really worth a visit. And I also would just point out that encourage people to visit the Adirondack State Park, where environmentalism is probably perhaps its most effectiveness, most effective in terms of preservation of 6 million acres, which is about 80 percent, the park is about 80 percent of the size of the state of Maryland. It's one-fifth of the whole entire state of New York, yet only 150,000 people live in the entire area. And parts of the area that are under the control or owned by the state, no new development, no new buildings are permitted to be built. So there are literally thousands of lakes up there that are well protected. In fact, one of the lakes that we drove by, they said that the water in that lake is so clean that you can literally drink it. And in fact, I also learned that the water supply for New York City that comes down from the Adirondacks through Aqueducts, isn't, the water is not treated before it leaves these reservoirs. It's that clean, so it goes directly from these lakes into the city water system. So it's very hopeful, because it gives you an idea that with conscientious planning, that an awful lot can be done to protect our environment, and it's a very encouraging sort of thing, and it's something I recommend to anybody who's thinking of traveling, to spend some time in that part of the, that part of our country, because there's a lot of examples of things that we may want to try to emulate here in Tacoma Park. But thank you for this time to talk about this.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. It's been only 15 minutes or so since Ms. Neumeyer imparted to us the news about the Certificate of Need application recommendation, and I'm continuing to think about it and want to, didn't speak before, but want to add my thanks now that you came here to deliver the news personally, and I think I will repeat what you've already heard, that we all recognize the difficulties and challenges that the recommendation poses for Adventist Healthcare, and I would hope, of course, that if the recommendation is sustained, or whether or not it is, by the full commission, that we discover opportunities in whatever direction that we head. So, changing tracks, Councilmember Daniels Cohen mentioned the Folk Festival and left off one great thing about it, which is the volunteering opportunities that it affords. The Folk Festival runs with volunteers who serve as stage managers, set up cleanup crew, manning information, or I should say staffing information booths, and t-shirt sales and so on. And if you haven't volunteered already, and you're available for a two-hour shift, then you can volunteer by going to the Folk Festival website, tpff.org. Please do. I'm volunteering, and I know that several of my council colleagues are also. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome back to all my colleagues. It's good to be back here at the council again and ready to start up. It's going to be a big change, but we'll talk about that later. I just want to congratulate Mr. Lovelace on his invitation to the White House, and I'm confident that he will represent us well at the discussion on healthcare. I'm confident that he will represent us well at the discussion on health care. The main thing I want to mention tonight is that Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington is beginning planning, as of today, for the Thanksgiving food giveaway that they do each year. For the last several years, they've given enough food for a thousand families in the area to have Thanksgiving dinner, including a turkey. And that's not an easy task to pull together, as you might imagine. And so, as we think about volunteers for Folk Festival, and I encourage everybody to volunteer there, but you will learn how exciting and rewarding it is to volunteer. And then I would encourage you to contact Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington at 301-585-6556, and find out what the needs are, as you can imagine, for a program like that, with giving away so much food to the needy families, the more vulnerable neighbors in our community. It takes a lot of, a lot of planning, a lot of work, and the more people that can help to find both monetary donations and food donations, or help to pull it together and distribute the food, the easier the task is for everyone. So, please call 301-585-6556 if you'd like to help. Thank you.
And I just have a comment or two. First, I always like to take the opportunity to recognize former colleagues who have joined us, and I want to recognize that former Mayor Kathy Porter is here, and former Councilmember Doug Barry is here as well, and welcome to you both. And it's always good to see former colleagues and know that you, more than most, have a good understanding of what's going on, and it's always nice to see you back. I just also wanted to take a moment to make some comments about the sidewalk work that's been going on in the city over a period of time now. While we were on break, I had a number of questions from residents about, gee, why is the sidewalk work going on on my street? Why is it going on in my neighborhood? Why are we doing this work? And so, I kind of thought about a good way to respond that would get at what we're trying to accomplish, and I just wanted to read two paragraphs that I wrote, and hope this is a good reminder to residents who might have that same question. "The council has always been looking for ways to fund sidewalks, either the repair of existing or the replacement of new, in locations that are needed. When we established the speed camera program with the attendant need to spend any funds on public safety, sidewalk work became one of the obvious programs to undertake with some of these funds. At the same time, we became aware that any sidewalk work, either new or retrofit, needs to comply with the ADA requirements. We also understood that if we aren't proactive about spending funds to improve accessibility, that the U.S. Department of Justice might put us under a consent decree, much as they have with both Fairfax County and Montgomery County. An added reason here is that the official in charge of the Civil Rights Division at Justice, who is responsible for these consent decrees, is our own Tacoma Park resident, Tom Perez. So, the council has designated a level of annual funding for ADA work out of the Speed Camera Fund, and staff came up with a plan for the work. We're going neighborhood by neighborhood, using the ADA standards to identify the work. Of course, with our narrow streets and rights of way, many times it's very hard to find all of the space needed to meet modern standards, but we make the modifications that we can, given the existing infrastructure. We started in Ward One near the metro, and we're working our way throughout the city." So, that is why some of this work is going on in your neighborhood. If we haven't gotten there, we will. At this point, does the city manager have any comments? And we're joined by the soon-to-be acting city manager, Suzanne Ledlow.
Thank you. Good evening. Just four brief pieces of information. The first has to do a reminder to the council, the Sustainability RFP has been distributed to you for comments, and Barb has a couple days to get your comments back. She'd like to get that out this week. I wanted to mention a little bit about the Sligo Park Hills Ritchie Avenue traffic restrictions. The, tomorrow we will have signs starting to be put out that will implement the restrictions through the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood, mostly outside of the city, and on the Ritchie Avenue neighborhood. These restrictions essentially will prohibit driving from the east through the neighborhoods towards downtown Silver Spring in the morning, and doing the return trip in the afternoon. The signs will be posted tomorrow. The Montgomery County DOT will not be informing its police department, the Montgomery County Police, about them for a week. Nevertheless, the signs will be active. The Tacoma Park Police Department will enforce the signs, but at the beginning, they will issue warnings for this week while people are getting used to these new signs. We anticipate some confusion, but our police department is watching out for that and will assist folks. I wanted to mention that there is a house at 6502 Sligo Mill Road that is to be demolished. It's likely to be demolished this week. We haven't yet heard exactly which day that will be, but I will let you know when that is done. And I think I'm going to take a point of privilege right here and address the fact that Barb is leaving last day is on Friday, and I just want to say that it was a privilege to work with her, to learn from her, and to laugh with her, and I wish her the best.
And if I can just double-check with you on the traffic restriction signs that the county is posting, I'm used to thinking when something like that happens, they'll say, you know, new restrictions starting such and such a date, so that people get a little warning. It sounds like they're posting them, saying there are now restrictions, but they're giving it a week for people to get used to it.
That's how they're doing it now.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that some people have been asking me if it is legal to make a U-turn in Maple Avenue. Do you know the answer to that?
My...
I'm glad it was, but I don't know the answer to it.
My best, we have the police in attendance here, they might be able to say that they...
Lieutenant?
My only memory of telling people is U-turns are legal in the District of Columbia; they're not legal in Maryland. But you might have a better handle on what the law is on that. You need to come down to the microphone.
I'm not encouraging them in any event.
We're being joined by, I'm not sure, I always get the rank right, Lieutenant Collington?
Yes, Lieutenant Tyrone Collington. Yes, it's legal to make a U-turn in the state of Maryland, as long as the signs don't prohibit you. So, like Maple Avenue, where you just asked a question, it's legal to make a U-turn there.
Okay.
As long as you're doing safely.
So, that's a matter of interpretation, just what the police hate. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Councilmember Smith.
What is the fine if someone, if the police stops someone with the traffic restriction area?
Lieutenant? If someone violates a road restriction sign?
Violates what sign?
Like a no right turn during certain hours.
It's a, I believe it's $90 fine.
$90, okay.
It goes up every year, but I believe right now it's $90.
Are there points?
Certain points for certain violations. But it's one or two points.
Okay. Thank you.
Until you do it a couple times. Okay, we will move along to adoption of minutes. We have four sets of minutes from March 19th, April 2nd, April 9th, and April 16th. Would somebody like to move adoption? Moved by Councilmember Siemens, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Any corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We will now move to our special session, which is a resolution recognizing the contributions of Barbara Matthews as city manager. And what I would like to do first, once I get to it, is read the resolution, because I think it's important to note many of the things that she accomplished in her eight years here. "Whereas Barbara Matthews became the city manager of the city of Tacoma Park on July 12th, 2004, and whereas she brought an extensive knowledge of financial and budget management and the principles and practices of public administration and leadership to the city, and whereas her deep sense of ethics, fairness, fiscal responsibility, and commitment to all members of the community pervaded every action and set a high moral standard for all those who served with her, and whereas she ensured that organizational and resource decisions were consistent with the goals and objectives of the city council, even when crises or new issues demanded attention, and whereas her eight years of service to the city has been notable for her many accomplishments and contributions, including correcting construction and financial problems with the community center construction project and establishing processes that allowed for successful renovation of the auditorium and public works facilities, helping lead the effort to receive fair payment for municipal tax duplication, and the Tacoma Park Police rebate, leading to hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city of Tacoma Park that the Montgomery County Executive wished not to pay, making the difficult decision to rethink services, cut staff, and freeze wages when the recession forced the state and county to cut expected payments to the city, and handling the needed layoffs in a sensitive way that was greatly appreciated by staff and the council, ensuring great strides in the community's public safety through improvements in police methods and staffing, helping expand recreational services by adding programming and staff support for seniors and teens, instituting online registration, and filling the new community center with programs for all ages, encouraging a wonderful blossoming of arts and humanities events and installations throughout Tacoma Park through the Arts and Humanities Commission, will our Tacoma programs in the auditorium, the library, mosaic, poetry readings, and more, and serving on boards, commissions, and task forces, including the Joint Task Force on Municipal Tax Duplication and Revenue Sharing, the International City County Management Association Sustainability Task Force, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Government's Chief Administrative Officers Committee, the Maryland City County Management Association, where she served as president, and the Maryland Municipal League Board of Directors. Whereas Barbara Matthews has resigned from the city of Tacoma Park effective September 7th to be the city manager of the city of Rockville, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the city of Tacoma Park hereby recognizes the contributions that she's made to the city of Tacoma Park and to the Tacoma Park community during her tenure with the city, and wishes her the best for the future." So, council comments. I will start with a couple. I want to say that one thing that got left off of the resolution was Barb always answered her own phone, and that is not always the case with chief administrative officers, and I think a lot of people really appreciate that. And I think that one thing that maybe some people in the community don't understand about how city managers do their jobs and how Barb did hers, was some people sometimes say, "Well, I haven't seen the city manager out at various events in the city." And I think that's because Barb's approach has been that she's the professional kind of behind the curtain, always trying to make sure that everything works as best it can, and making sure that the elected officials are out front, in public, interacting with people, showing up at things, making sure that things work as smoothly as they can. And it's because we've had Barb behind us, providing all of the information, all of the resources, all of the interpretations, all of the hard work. And she has, I don't know how many days of the week she stays, how late, but I know that whenever I'm here late, she's always here. She puts in tremendously hard hours, and anytime that there's anything happening in the city, no matter where she is, she's in touch with her staff, she's in touch with the council, she knows what's going on, and she's right involved in anything that comes up, be it an emergency, be it a particular situation that needs some information, some intention, some thoughtful input. Many times, I've sent her mostly emails, once in a while a phone call on the weekend, and I finally got in the habit of saying in the subject of the email, "Please don't respond to this right away," because I know even if I send it at 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, I'll get a response. Her cellphone is always there, she's always available for whatever is needed, and it's a really dedicated, professional way to do her job, and she's done a wonderful job here. When she announced that she was accepting the job in Rockville, I was disappointed. I wasn't necessarily surprised. I knew it would be coming because the average city manager tenure in this country is less than five years. She's been here now eight years and two months, and so we've had her longer than we had every right to expect that she would be here. I wish she had decided to retire here, but that's not the case, and she's still got a long way to go in her career as a city manager, and I know Rockville will be a much better place because of her being the city manager there. I had the opportunity to watch some of their council meetings when I was awake and turning on the television at about 2:30 one night last week, and it was a repeat of a Rockville City Council meeting, and I thought, "Oh, you need Barb." And so, I just really appreciate all that you've done for the city, the professional way that you have done it all, and I've enjoyed working with you personally for the eight years that you've been here, particularly the last five as mayor. And we haven't always agreed about everything, but I always can count on you for an honest evaluation of a particular situation, and I can always count on you to come up with proposed solutions that are easy for people to grasp, and easy for people to understand, and easy for people to realize are a fair way to do whatever it is. And your sense of fairness is one of the things that really rises to the top, and I certainly appreciate all that you've done. And we will miss you, but you'll be close by, and we'll continue to work with you on tax duplication and other issues, so I know we'll see you around, and I look forward to that. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a difficult thing to say goodbye to you, Barb. It's really been a pleasure to have you as the city manager here. When I think back of kind of the state of business at the time when you joined the city, and look at the accomplishments that have been made in the professionalism of the staff, the correction of some of the difficulties that the various departments were facing at the time that you joined the city, the way that you did all that and took each of those tasks on, and did an excellent job, but threw your crew with all the pressure, especially in the beginning when things were very difficult. You did it, again, I mentioned professional, pleasant manner. You know, Bruce talked about integrity, it's again outstanding characteristic that it's always nice to work with someone who you know you can trust. You may not always agree with someone, but you know that they're coming from the right place. I'm not going to go on and on. I agree with everything that's in the resolution, what the mayor said so far, and I suspect I'm going to agree with everything the rest of the council says. But I'm going to miss you as a city manager, and look forward to seeing you again as you move to a larger municipality.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens used a word that I'll repeat, which is professionalism. I would simply observe that Barb Matthews as city manager restored and maintained the highest level of professionalism and competence in city administration. Those two qualities, professionalism and competence, are often taken for granted, and they definitely shouldn't be. It's often said that the real mark of ability is the capability of getting a job done and making it look easy. I wouldn't say that Barb made this job look easy, but I think that it is underappreciated how difficult it is to do this job well, and she has done it well. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you all have just heard the very proper resolution speak, and I'm going to give you some case speak. My twisted sister, the ugly one, is beginning to this chat because she is not a happy camper. Rawr! I don't like sending Tacoma Park City Manager Barbara Matthews up the road to Rockville. Our loss is true. Our loss is truly their gain, as Barbara was one of our closest guarded secrets, yet they still discovered her. However, my kind heartfelt self is grateful for the eight years that Tacoma Park has had the opportunity to spend with Barbara Matthews. She has always provided high quality, and you're going to hear this, I think, over and over again, high quality, professional, and consistently excellent service to the city. She dug us out of a deep hole. I think when she got here, there was a deep hole, almost right where we're sitting. And not only did she dig us out of it literally, she did it figuratively as well. And her wake, she's left us with a beautiful and functional renovated auditorium. I wanted to say circa 2010 as opposed to circa 1976 or '77, because that's what it was before. Also, a brand-new public works facility, plus a bazillion other innovative improvements in every city department. She's brought us excellence in all that she touches. She leaves huge shoes to fill. She has been of special assistance to me personally by carving out time to teach us council newbies the ropes, and these are ropes that I am still trying to learn. I ain't got them yet. It is with a heavy heart that I'm sending her to Rockville with a special gold star and wishing her all the best in her new digs. After all, we Tacoma Parkers were instrumental in her training, so we know she will continue to soar. Many huglets, best wishes, and gold stars to Barbara Matthews. This is the real gold star, it's not the spoken one.
All right.
I don't want to buy any more of those, all right? It's too many this year.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I haven't been on the council for very long, but I would like to say thank you to Barb. During the campaign, she was very, very generous with her time. She answered all of my questions, and she gave me great advice on how to make my legislative initiatives reality. I just want to say that we will miss you, Barb. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I'm on council is because I believe in public service, and I believe in the good that government can do in helping communities come together and lift people up. And so it's just at such a personal level, such a pleasure to meet someone who's so relentlessly dedicated to efficient and effective government. So, thank you, and thank you for doing the exact same thing in Rockville.
Councilmember Schultz.
Barb, I can't see you because the podium stands between you and me. So, I don't know whether, maybe I'll stand up so I can see over that TV screen or whatever it is. First of all, I just wanted to remind you that it's not too late to change your mind.
Is it?
No, I mean, you know, it's true, we haven't actually signed the contract for the executive search firm, so think on it. I guess the thing that impressed me among several that I would just like to comment on was your loyalty to your staff. Through thick and thin, I was impressed of the level of protectiveness that you have provided to your staff by keeping clear the delineations of their, what their responsibilities are as distinct from what the legislative responsibilities are of those who sit up here in the City Council and have to make policy and political decisions. You've been really good at delineating clear lines of command in your management of the city government, so that I always knew who to go to when I needed to ask questions and get information. Having myself worked for two different municipalities collectively for close to about 20 years in my career, I know what it's like to be a municipal employee at the lower levels of a large government bureaucracy looking up. And I can honestly say that you would have been the kind of boss that I would have been really excited to have been able to work for. And I'd also like to, two other things, I guess, is just to say that sitting up here, it's a job that we have here that you never stop learning how to do it. And your role as the city manager has helped me tremendously in understanding how to do my job better. You've given me tremendous amount of advice and counsel, while at the same time maintaining your professionalism always, and that's been a tremendous help to me, and I think, in learning how to be a good city council member. And I think that the most impressive thing in my nearly three years on the city council that I watched you do was when we were going through our budget crisis and fiscal year, I guess it was '11 or something like that. I think that this was an extraordinarily challenging time for all of us. It was my first year on the city council, and I got the impression that, wow, this is really a bouncy road. But I think you, we had to lay off, I think, equivalent of eight full-time employees. You handled, you had to handle the side of the things that dealt with the staff and the decisions as to who would be affected, and you had to help us make those budget decisions as to what we needed to do. And I thought you handled that with a tremendous amount of grace, sensitivity to both those who were obligated to leave the city employment, and to all of those who were left behind and continued to have to work in order to maintain the high quality of morale, which I think has been sustained throughout these difficult financial years. And I think that was just a tremendous job that you helped us to get through, all of us. So, I want to thank you for your work. I'm glad you're not going too far away, because we'll be able to continue to see each other, and I look forward to your effectiveness in all of these same issues as you help to professionalize the government of Rockville.
Is there any public comment on this resolution?
Well, that is maybe one of the first times that I've heard the council being truly unanimous in its opinion about anything, and it's perfectly apt and appropriate that it be here in relation to Barb. I think it was about seven years ago, in this very site, when a small mouse ran across the podium here and raced across the other side, and I leaned over to my then-colleague councilman, Bruce, and I said, "Well, that mouse, typical Tacoma Park, he wants his three minutes of public comment." But really what it was is sort of a low point at the time on the city council when we were enmeshed in various controversies over the construction of the community center. And we had issues with architects, we had issues with contractors, and plumbers, and lawyers, and every week it seemed, members of the public came down to pillory us about what they thought was our perceived inaction or bungling. And it was just a very tough, very tough time, and I had been on the council just for a very short time, and I thought, "If this is the way this job is going to go, I'm not going to be here very long at all." And into this parachuted Barb, who, as a consummate professional, set the tone very early on, that of competence, of professionalism, bringing her very, very long career in public service, and in particular her strengths in finance and accounting, but she also had a lot of experience, as it turned out, in dealing with contractors, in dealing with construction problems, and knew the complexities, and knew how to sit people down and deal with all of these different issues. So, by setting the tone early on, I think she set the stage for much better times in the city where the council and city government could focus on problem-solving, not problem-creating. And just outside in the reception for Barb a few minutes ago, a couple of her colleagues that she had supervised all of these years said that the city now, thanks to Barb, is like a smooth-running machine, and good for Barb's successor, because she'll have a much easier job as a result of it. And I thought a smooth-running machine for Tacoma Park was not quite an apt metaphor, and that there probably some backfires and coughs in the process, but I do think the city is in good hands now, thanks to all of you, and all of the folks on the council. And I do think that what Barb has accomplished is something that is enviable for all of us, and that is to leave a place better than when she found it. And I believe that that's what she's done. So, Barb, thanks so much. It was great having you as a colleague and former Mayor Porter. Nice to see you here tonight as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, official peace delegate. And I want to say thank you very much, Barbara, for the work you've done for my city, and continue to do for my city. And I remember one time when you visited us all over at the Franklin Apartments, one couple, several years ago. I remember that. We had a luncheon down there, and you came down to visit. I thought that was so, so nice, and I remember that. I still think of that quite often, and I'm going to miss the care you put into this community when you leave. But I still want to welcome you back from the recess with the rest of the council to say you can at least have three more days with us, because I'd like you to have your 3,000 more days with us, if not more, because you've done so much for our city, and now you're going to Rockville, and you'll probably do, take a lot of Tacoma Park with you, I hope, and show Rockville what the right way to go is, and maybe you can get Rockville working for peace. Thank you very much. Maybe you can appoint a peace delegate for Rockville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This has been said, so I'll be brief, but I do want to put on the record a personal thank you to Barb. About a dozen years ago, we had a vision for a community center. The vision was grand, the implementation, not so much. So, when Barb arrived here, we did have a situation, and we had, we were putting, sinking a pipe out front under the parking lot, a pipe big enough to float a boat, one of many problems. And the note was repeating, except that the project was unfinished. It may still be unfinished, except Barb did arrive. We sit here, stand here in a pretty nice place today, all because of those 60-hour weeks that Barb put in. So, Barb, thank you for all of us, and good luck in Rockville, and enjoy Italy.
I don't know if you're still holding with asking people to identify themselves, but I'm Kathy Porter.
Nobody wanted to do this evening, they thought we all knew.
That's probably quite true. I just wanted to add my thanks to Barb, the thanks that everybody has been giving her this evening. I don't want to repeat what everyone said, but I just did want to note that I would completely agree that Barb brought a level of professionalism to the city that we had not seen before. I think the city is doing as good a job providing services to people who live here as it has ever done, and I would give a lot of that credit to Barb. I think she did especially well in sort of bringing us up to date in the finances of the city. That's an area that she has special expertise, and you can really see it from the work that she did with the city. The other thing, and perhaps I can say this now more than I could when I was sitting up where you are, is that Barb does a very good job of managing the council. I think people who aren't up there don't realize that the council is not a single entity, but it is seven separate people with seven separate goals and ways of getting to things. And anyone who has a job can imagine what it would be like if you had not just one boss or a boss and your boss's boss, but if you had seven bosses, all of whom you had to please in order to do a good job. And I think Barb always did an excellent job of working with the individuals of the council as well as the council as an entity. I remember there have been a number of times when, much to our dismay, she would tell us that something we wanted her to do, she didn't in fact have the resources to do when she could do it, but she would have to stop doing something else. And actually, that kind of information is invaluable to members of the council. You don't want someone who just says, "Yes, yes, yes, they'll do everything," and then you find out there's no way you can get everything done. I give Barb a lot of credit for calling us on times when we were putting more on her plate than the staff that we had authorized money for could possibly do. The other thing I just wanted to note is that Tacoma Park tends to be very hard on city managers. We have, over the years, basically released city managers from here bruised and battered. And I have to say, I give Barb a lot of credit for ending her term in Tacoma Park as a person who's still standing and still looking strong, in spite of everything you've given her. So, I give her credit for that, too. Thanks, Barb.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. When the Emergency Preparedness Committee started around October of 2004, we had a little bit of controversy on it. Some people felt that it should be a policy committee. Some people felt the committee should get out into the community. And I talked to Barb, and she very much encouraged me to do, and I was one of the people that wanted to go out to the community and to educate as much as possible our citizens associations and anybody else who wanted to listen. She encouraged me to do that, and I did that for a number of years. I hope it helped. Without her encouragement, I don't know what would have happened. I spoke with many of our community associations, and of course, it's no secret, and you can put this on the record, I do have a big mouth. It runs in the family. I only hope that we helped, but without her encouragement, I'm not sure what would have happened, and she was very helpful. And I want to thank her for her support during my tenure on the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Committee, I think that is very important, especially with what has happened in the last two weeks down in New Orleans and Mississippi, and other places like that even coming up through the country with the hurricane. So, thank you very much. She and I both have a bond. We've both been at another job. She went through a chlorine gas spill emergency, and I've been involved in a chlorine gas spill emergency. When we first met, we discussed it, and I knew right then we were going to hit it off, and we did. So, thank you again.
What I'd like to do at this point is have the council vote on this resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to move it first?
Yeah, I guess we do.
I think you did.
Yeah, move the resolution. Yeah, who wants to move it?
Move it?
Second.
Okay. And we've already voted.
That was appropriate.
I didn't want to vote for it.
And I want to give you the resolution, and then once you've got it in hand, so we can't take it back, then any comments you want to make.
I have to admit, it's very odd being on this side of things when the mayor called for city manager comments. I called Kathy Porter. I almost would have jumped and felt there was something I ought to be saying. You know, I'm running behind schedule, and I do want to do my part to try to help you get back on schedule, but I just want to say how appreciative and grateful I am for having had the opportunity to be the city manager of this organization and this community for the past eight years. The council and many members of the public have been very gracious about attributing certain things to me, and I think one of the things, if you're a smart city manager, you know, is that you accomplish very little by yourself. I have been very blessed to have worked for 18 elected officials during my time in Tacoma Park. I actually was counting them earlier, and Jesse had to actually remind me that there were two that I missed in my count. But all the city council members that I've worked for here are among the most hard-working elected officials. thing, that people will actually care enough to make the time and to volunteer and to actually work towards being a community member. And I do think there's a difference between being a city resident and being a community member, because I think what people here do is actually take some responsibility and involve themselves in building their community. And last but not least, I would be horribly remiss if I didn't thank the city staff. And I'll probably be very brief, because I'll probably tear up if I talk about it too much. I have just been blessed to work with the greatest group of people that any city manager could ever hope for, and I'm just so grateful for everything they have given me. One of the easiest things, I guess, about making the move, if there is an easiest thing, is as my husband would say, who grew up in the country, I'll just be up the road a piece. I will still be working in Montgomery County, and I'm sure we'll have the opportunity to work together in the future on many, many issues. So, once again, I just thank you for the opportunity, for the kind things you've said this evening.
And I wanted to say...
Love it.
Council of Governments, and we're being joined by Executive Director for a few months longer, Dave Robertson, and I'm not quite sure of the exact title, but Director of Planning, Paul DeJordain.
Thank you, and good evening. And it is a special honor to be here this evening to bid a fond farewell to Barb. She's been great on your behalf and your community, representing you regionally at the Council of Governments. The best thing you can say about the relationship between city managers and other city managers, it's a special position. There are only in this region a couple dozen people that have these jobs. They're very unique, as you all noted in your comments. They're great men and women. And we're so fortunate that we have those individuals that spend a little bit of their time, those very long hours, working on regional matters. The good news for me is, while you might technically be losing her in Tacoma Park, she's just changing sort of team jerseys, and she'll be in Rockville, and so we'll still have the opportunity to work with her regionally through COG. I'm just going to give a few comments, opening comments, because I know we have some newer council members, and so I thought it'd be a great opportunity to talk to you just a little bit about the Council of Governments. We are the regional association of 250 local, state, and federal elected officials, so yourself, your colleagues from all the other city and counties in the national capital region, suburban Maryland, northern Virginia, District of Columbia, the state legislatures from suburban Maryland and northern Virginia, and the region's congressional delegation, House and Senate. And so when you have 250 local, state, and federal elected officials, all trying to pull in the same direction, there's very little that you can't accomplish. And we're so privileged to have so many elected officials work with us in leadership positions. Mayor Williams obviously passed Chair of the COG Board. Kathy Porter, past mayor, has served as Chair of our Transportation Planning Board. In short, if it's something that's important to your community, we're probably involved, but at the regional scale. How we can pull together DC, suburban Maryland, northern Virginia to speak, if possible, with one voice and lead the charge for regional action. A couple of points that were made earlier in your council time. I applaud Councilmember Daniels Cohen in terms of emergency preparedness and personal preparedness. We've had a very strong record at the Council of Governments. We've always had strong work with emergency managers, police, and fire, working together regionally. We're very proud of our regional mutual aid agreements that help communities help one another. But as we learned on 9/11, and we sadly keep relearning those lessons with storms and other issues, we're only as good as the next challenge that we have to face. And we can't do that just one, no one jurisdiction has all the resources necessary to deal with these types of issues. And so working together, we are clearly stronger as a community. Also, the other comment, I believe it was Councilmember Schultz to talk about prepared, no, excuse me, about community planning. You're going to hear a lot about that from Paul DeJordain this evening, because again, each jurisdiction has their own responsibilities for land use and other matters. Our job is to try and see how we can see the big trends. What are the big issues that we're dealing with in terms of community planning and regional planning, and make sure that our region is the best in the nation, that we have the best land use, the best transportation assets, the best environmental resource protection, so that we have the quality of life to sustain that quality of life in the national capital region in the same way that attracted so many people to this community and to this region. Two quick things I'd like to talk about, programs that are right, you know, as I say, ripped from the headlines, big issues that the Council of Governments is working on right now. Your community wasn't significantly affected this time, but the Verizon 911 problems that hit northern Virginia during the derecho storm put almost a million people without 911 service. And we have had other Verizon 911 problems spotty in DC, Maryland, and Virginia over the past few years. The Council of Governments is doing two things. One, we're working with state and local emergency managers to look at all of the after-action studies underway from the derecho storm, to see how those line up, where are the overlaps, but more importantly, where are the gaps? We also have a much deeper dive on the Verizon 911 issue. It is a life safety issue, so important to so many of our residents in this community and elsewhere. And we're working very well with some of the state and federal regulatory bodies that control that, as well as Verizon itself. And you'll be hearing more about that later this fall within a very aggressive schedule. Also, one thing, the federal government is likely to change. Federal government, Uncle Sam has been very good to this national capital region. It is the single largest employer in the national capital region. But I don't have a crystal ball to tell you. I heard your peace delegate talking about the importance of voting, and I agree with that entirely. None of us have a crystal ball. I don't know where the election will go, don't know what Congress will do, but I don't know anybody that thinks the federal government is going to employ more or spend more. Chances are, it will have fewer people and will spend less. This region has grown significantly on the strength of that federal economy, and we have to anticipate how we may change in the future. I grew up, as the mayor knows and a few other people in the Detroit area, and if Detroit was anticipating changes to the manufacturing sector 30 years ago, things might be a little bit different right now. And so how can this region, we're not saying the federal government's going away, but how can this region anticipate changes and get out ahead of those? And so all this year, the Council of Governments has been looking at a growth agenda around economic growth and competitiveness. Not how we are going to change overnight, but how we can get ahead of these issues. We brought in business leaders, community leaders, educators, workforce specialists, economic development officials, to listen and learn from all of those sectors. And we will be taking a report back to the Board of Directors later this fall that looks at how can we use the assets of this region, the things that we do really well at. How can we do that even better? How can we look at some new growth opportunities, new niches that we can perhaps exploit to our advantage, in bringing that forward to the Board of Directors and working with all of our members to implement that? That brings me to this focus of tonight's presentation, and I'll turn it over to Paul in just a minute. But back in 2010, the COG Board of Directors passed, and every one of our member jurisdictions endorsed something we called Region Forward. It's a guideline for regional planning looking out to the year 2050. What are the things that we need to be doing today to anticipate the pace and direction of growth and transportation and economic quality of life and a range of issues? We set performance goals and targets. If it's important enough to measure, chances are you might actually achieve that. We had all of our jurisdictions endorse Region Forward, and what you're going to hear this evening, tonight, from Paul, is one of the most important projects or tasks around that, an update to our regional priority growth areas. Where are the places, our individual communities and collectively us as a region, where have we decided that we want to really pinpoint our investments for growth and development, our transportation investments, our job investments, our housing investments, so that we have the quality of life, the sustainability, and other assets that have attracted us to this region? So with that very, probably too fast overview, and I'll be glad to come back or talk to any of you individually, particularly some of the newer members, I'm very proud of the Council of Governments. I know that it is stronger for Tacoma Park being a member and for leading it in so many ways at the staff and elected official level. But I don't want to take away from Paul's quick presentation, because we will be taking this Regional Activity Center map back to the Board of Directors later this fall. And Tacoma Park likes to be first in so many things, and it is. You're number two on my presentation list. We did City of Manassas a few weeks back, but we're out to your community, and in the next few weeks, we'll be hitting all 22 member jurisdictions with presentations similar to this, so that when you vote, I hope affirmatively, on this issue before the Council of Governments in the fall, you will do so, having the support of your colleagues in the community. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I'll turn it over to Paul, and I'll return if there are any questions.
Okay. And just before we go to Paul, I just want to say to you that it's been a real pleasure working with you for 19 years.
Oh, lordy. That long. I had hair back then.
And this region is a much better place because of your work at the Council of Governments, and you're now 10 years as Executive Director. And we look forward to, hoping to continue to work with you in some fashion, even as you move to Portland next year. And this region will miss your presence and miss your guidance and your great intelligence and your integrity in working with all of us in the region.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate those kind remarks. Thank you.
Paul, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Appreciate it. And just as a side note, I, we do share some of your interests. We know that there will be some change coming to the Council of Governments as well, so we're hoping David has left some big shoes and has some good leadership for us to follow in.
And just so you know, there's a button on the podium you can raise and lower it, so it's a good comfort level for you.
Oh, that's good. All right. Thank you, sir. I'll just touch very quickly, as David said, on something that really relates to the work that you all do here. You know, COG is an association of all the local governments, but when we talk about activity centers, we are talking about community planning, local efforts. You, Mayor Williams, Ms. Porter, Ms. Lobo, a number of you do remember that the long history of the activity centers, how it was a request from the TPB, the Transportation Planning Board, really to focus, give us a lens for connecting transportation. And what I'm going to touch on very briefly is how we think in revisiting this, as David alluded to, as part of Region Forward, we've come up with what we believe to be a much better product, a much more holistic, if you will, perspective on activity centers. What are the, as you see, there are urban centers, places like Tacoma Park, priority growth areas, traditional towns, transit hubs, places that are communities, places that are the focus of growth, you know, places that we want good things to happen, that will accommodate much of the future growth going forward. Ms. Clark, how do I advance this?
Assistant Assistant.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. As I mentioned, you know, previously, the activity centers were entirely a technical exercise. They were requested by the TPB. They were based on our growth projections, the forecasts that Ms. Danes and her colleagues prepare around the region. They were major employment centers, essentially. What we're now referring to them as, or what we see them evolving into really is more a technical and a policy tool, if you will. We're taking sort of a different perspective at how you define them. And then really, as David alluded to, taking them out for sort of comment and review period now, and really asking folks in the community, and I'll touch on that very briefly, how can they in fact be used over and above just for traditional planning purposes? I mentioned we took a different approach. This was the work of the planning directors, working with members of the Region Forward Coalition, folks who have a background in planning, design, real estate, and whatnot. And what we came up with is this sort of menu that you see here, that to be an activity center, you had to have two core attributes, and I'll touch on them, and then any two of four other sort of additional attributes. Again, keep in mind, before, it was just literally what was the threshold? How much growth were you anticipated to receive? Well, what are those attributes? The required, the core attributes, if you will, is first that it's a policy center. It's a focus of growth in the community. It's been identified in a local comprehensive plan. It's an area where investment, where planning and policy decisions are being focused. The second is, and again, it builds on this, is that it's an area that by 2040, our forecasting horizon, you know, the future that we look out to, that these would be the places that would capture at least, be within, rather, at least half of the top, half of the density of the population and jobs in a particular jurisdiction. Again, the concentration of where growth would be. The attributes that are sort of optional, the additional attributes, two of these. Intersection density, the conversation earlier before about sidewalks, and we talk a lot about walkable communities. One of those measures is the street grids that you would actually see. So if by that measure, you had at least 55 intersections, there's some research, empirical research, that suggests that's in fact a very good threshold. Transit capacity, again, the transportation is a very important measure, very important consideration, looking at communities. Is there good, dedicated, high-capacity transit, either currently or in the region's long-range plan, that would support these particular centers? Mixed use, is there any mix of uses? Not just jobs, but housing and other amenities, retail, educational facilities. We're trying to look at, again, making complete communities and then putting infrastructure in place to support and connect them. And then, lastly, a measure that really does, is a very sort of academic, technical perspective, if you will, the housing and transportation affordability. There's been, again, empirical research that suggests a threshold of, if that cost threshold, rather, you shouldn't exceed 45 percent, that that does in fact make for a more desirable community. What are these places? What you're looking at, the activity centers that we have defined, based on our work, we began these conversations with the region's planning directors back in December of last year. And what you are looking at is the map that we're going to be taking to other boards and councils like yourselves for their review and comment, and then final approval, as David mentioned, by the COG Board. This is a concept map, if you will. Each of those dots, based on our research, our conversation, you know, the analysis, if you will, that we undertook with the jurisdictions for those thresholds, we've identified the places that you see here. Those are being depicted basically as a half-mile radius. It's the concept. It's the place that really, really resonates with each jurisdiction. Again, you can see some patterns that stand out. This is the I-270 corridor, and as you come down in, again, here closer to the district in Tacoma Park. But again, very traditional places that you would anticipate in the region. Here are the activity centers, based on our work with the District of Columbia, and also you see Tacoma Park there, it's designated Center Number 28. In Maryland, again, a much greater number of activity centers, again, representing places from traditional downtowns like historic Frederick to emerging places, Clarksville in the northern part of Montgomery County, and then again, older, more traditional communities, Bethesda Chevy Chase area inside the Capitol Beltway. And then again, Tacoma Park and Langley Park, and I'll touch on those in just a second here. Lastly, in Virginia, again, places like Tyson's Corner, Ashburn. Again, the key thing that I would ask you to recognize with many of these is they're all located on major transportation facilities. And again, there's the linkage, that these are places that jurisdictions have planned for growth and that they're planning to serve them. None of them is just, you know, an island out in the field, if you will. I mentioned that there are two that, working with Ms. Danes and Park and Planning Commission staff in Montgomery County, really that we've identified for the city. One, Number 28, the actual city of Tacoma Park, the center that we're calling Tacoma Park, is basically located right here where we are. It's about, the center would be about a block or two sort of west of us. And then the other center focused more on Langley Park, Number 33, that you see there, centered on University Boulevard. Again, these are the concept areas for the activity centers. We're working with the planning directors, the research folks, to actually define very specific geographies so that we can do more detailed demographic and economic analysis. But what we would be asking you all to review and comment on is those conceptual dots. What are some of the outcomes? Again, the key thing is these centers are based on local plans, areas that local governments have identified as priority places. have identified as priority places. The sheer number of centers has changed. In the past, we had, as you may remember, Mayor Williams, the much larger centers based on just sort of land use patterns that exist in suburban areas. What we've chosen to do in working with the local governments is really focus them down into smaller sort of walkable pieces. That triangular area that you're looking there is actually Tyson's Corner, and those individual dots are focused on the four Metro Rail stations within Tyson's Corner versus that large sort of just triangular shape that, you know, clearly was the boundary of that much greater area, but really focusing in on walkability and sort of a sense of community if that could be achieved. And then lastly, I've mentioned a couple of times how the centers are aligned with transportation networks around the region. I've talked on a number of occasions, both on the basis of the forecast, that they are in fact technically driven, policy driven, from local government plans and research. They're based also on our cooperative forecast. They'll be used for transportation modeling, as they have been in the past. As I said, we're working on building out the geographies for more detailed economic analysis. From the policy perspective, and again, this is why we're asking for the public comment period. We've had conversations, actually just last week, with the state of Maryland, because Maryland has, as you may know, Plan Maryland, which is a statewide effort to, if you will, begin to focus resources on priority funding areas. And so, within the state of Maryland, it's my understanding, there's a smart growth sub-cabinet, a number of different agencies. We're beginning to have the conversation with them to see, do the activity centers, and they should, that they've been identified in local government plans, but that we have identified through our process, how do they mesh with the state? Are there resources that can be tapped into in the future from those efforts, from housing, community development, state planning and whatnot? David talked about Region Forward. The activity centers really are our first sort of spatial lens. We've completed a very extensive baseline report, looking at where the region is going relative to the goals and targets that David talked about. But the activity centers are going to be really the first sort of smaller areas where we're going to look at things like how much job growth is actually occurring in some of these places? How much affordable housing is going into these places? Is there in fact, you know, fresh food availability? We're trying to look at things from a number of different perspectives. In that regard, we're also having conversations with sort of non-traditional planning organizations. We have on the Region Forward Coalition a number of representatives from the world of philanthropy. And so, they're looking at the concept of, you know, in an era of limited resources, is the activity center concept, places that could in fact be a lens for them to help prioritize their funding resources. The schedule, as I mentioned, what you're looking at, and I've gone through very, very quickly here, is sort of the illustrative activity center, sort of the policy framework map, if you will. They were introduced at the COG Board Retreat earlier this past summer. The Region Forward Coalition, which is the entity that oversees this work, did in fact approve and release the map for public comment. If you were to go to our website, we're actually soliciting specific comments right now. We have sort of an interactive group of maps and data elements behind that. Beginning now and really proceeding for the next month or two, we'll be doing, you know, the technical refinement, the boundaries that I mentioned, the statistical boundaries, working with the local planning staffs. The outreach, as David mentioned, you all are in fact the second body that we've come to, to have this sort of technical and policy discussion and have, you know, the comments with you all. It is our intention to take the final action by the Region Forward Coalition, final approval late October, and then the COG Board and the Transportation Planning Board in early November. So, with that, I will stop. I know I've gone very, very rapidly through a lot of things, but hopefully have teed up at least a few questions that I might be able to pose, have some answers for. So, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. I'll start with one quick observation and one question. You mentioned Plan Maryland, and I know that the state of Maryland has designated as priority funding areas all the municipalities in the state. And so, that is, I think, a very good sign that Maryland recognizes that growth should have, it has happened, will happen, should happen, where there is the infrastructure and there tends to be the infrastructure in municipalities. And I noticed on the map that you showed designated, whatever it was, 33, Langley Park, that we kind of, that that half-mile radius, is that what that is?
Yes.
Doesn't really kind of reach New Hampshire and University there with the planned transit center, which has, I guess, the most bus trips, bus passengers of any non-metro station in the region now. And I understand we're going to be getting some briefings, talking about what's happening, what the state is doing with acquiring land there for that transit center, and the purple line and what's going to be going on there. And just wondering if you could say a few words about how these areas will adapt and change over time, because I can anticipate that Number 33 is going to have to squeeze up New Hampshire Avenue and encompass more of that intersection.
Sort of two thoughts in that. One is sort of the observation, again, this is sort of a stylized depiction, if you will, the statistical representation, the work that the transportation engineers and folks who are actually closer to the planning decisions, I would suspect probably would comport a lot closer to sort of the area that you're describing. I can't.
Okay, so this is my function of depiction rather than what is really.
It's literally focused on sort of the center of where, you know, if people were to say, well, that intersection is generally the center of what I think about when I think about that place. It's, you know, a little bit more to the left or a little bit more to the right.
Because my sense is that whole bubble would slide over to New Hampshire as the center. But maybe that's just my parochial view.
But that's actually, as part of this comment period, that's actually, you know, that's almost perhaps, you know, just a technical refinement that we might want to have in the conversation.
And just thinking about the other one, 28 there, I'm gratified to see that it's currently centered basically right here, but wondering about the, is there another one or is this supposed to include the, down around the Tacoma metro? Or is that not the place where maybe that, where it used to be centered, but now it's more centered over here?
It really, and I want to confirm this with Ms. Danes and her staff, but it's my understanding that this really is the focus. It's the latter, which you were suggesting. The last point I'd make is, and as you remember, with the activity centers exercise in the past, is that we do anticipate updates. Plans change. Rezonings occur. Policy decisions are made. This isn't intended, this isn't, you know, the be-all, end-all tool, but it's also not intended to be, you know, just a static document that sits on the shelf, that if this does have, you know, some value, be it technical policy investment, we want it to be a living, breathing, just like any planning document. So we've anticipated sort of an annual review update, you know, for technical changes for what you and I are discussing, or again, if it's a major, major policy change, major comp plan, you know, what have you.
Any other comments or questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
You mentioned that affordable housing is something that you guys are considering. Is there a number that you think is the right amount of affordable housing?
That's a very good question. I can't tell you that there is a specific number. What we do know, it's more an issue of affordable housing, and we could get into sort of how to define that, but it's housing at the right price point in the right location. I mean, it's the sort of typical, you know, very longstanding challenge of, you know, the police officer, the firefighter, the nurse, the teacher, who can't afford to live close to the place where he or she works. I mean, that's sort of the workforce housing challenge. One of the specific research tasks that we're looking into, working with one of the local universities, will really try and go at just to what you're talking about. When you look at sort of 80 percent to 120 percent of area median income, what does that buy you? Where are those units located? Where, would they, could they, should be located? That's actually some research that we'll be commissioning later this fall. Be happy to bring those results back to you in the spring.
And are you looking at municipalities giving incentives to these people to purchase or rent housing, or?
I think that would be the second phase. The first is almost sort of the quantification, just what is the gap? Where, you know, spatially, where should it be? But then that is absolutely the most critical element. If it's what is the policy, what is the, you know, what can actually be the linchpin to make this happen?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congressman O'Meara.
Thank you. Is, if you could step outside your shoes for the moment, are there any possible downsides to being designated as an activity center?
I don't see any. The question always has actually been come, you know, from the counter of that, is, well, what does it mean? That, I wish I could say, you know, the counter of that is that this was an absolute guarantee that you would be able to tap into some great wellspring of new funding. That's not the case, that it's more the recognition that this is, you know, again, in an era of limited resources where prioritization should occur. But a downside, I really can't imagine, you know, anything in particular.
Okay, and the follow-up question, once you get to the deadline on your last slide there, what's next for the Region Forward Coalition? What's the next step in terms of their involvement on implementation of this plan or other work?
There's a number of things that are actually going to be teed up at the COG Board meeting next week. There's some research following up more sort of global, the mismatch between jobs and workforce, looking into some of those trends. The affordable housing challenge that we talked about before. Some very focused things that have come out of the baseline report that really say, you know, particularly in the traditional planning field, again, we're not, we've set goals and targets for where growth should be, we've measured it and it appears as though it is not going there. What then? Is that a technical? Is that a policy? Is that a financial? Really sort of peeling back the layers of those elements as well. Some of the other things that the Coalition will be working very closely with, the Transportation Planning Board, because again, wrestling with the issue of limited resources, you know, the TPB has for some time now wrestled with the challenge, if you will, of a financially constrained, long-range plan. They are working on what they're calling a priorities plan of, okay, what other additional facilities? And if we could identify the specific resources for that particular facility, you know, what would that list of things be? Would it then in fact connect some of these activity centers? Would that have a positive, you know, effect for them? The last piece, and I'll just touch on this very lightly, is we're commissioning some very specific research based on, again, some empirical research that a professor at NYU working with Brookings and working with a private real estate consulting firm, what we're calling our strategic investment plan. It's one thing to identify these places, something else to sort of draw the boundaries around them. What this professor has developed is, it's called the IMI, Irving, Minnesota Index. It's a list of perhaps 200 different indicators, everything from the presence of a good street grid, the presence of a mix of land uses, to things that you wouldn't necessarily think about, but that go to the quality of life, the presence of graffiti, the presence of, you know, vacant, underutilized property. It allows you, and we will be going through about 25 of the activity centers, to do this sort of empirical research to say, okay, what is missing here? If any one of these places wants to aspire to be all the best that it can be, to use sort of a well-worn phrase, what is missing? Is it the presence of fresh food? Is it the presence of affordable housing? Is it something else? So, it's something, we're actually very excited, we're excited about beginning that work just in the next month or so, be publishing that in the spring, and the Coalition will have the oversight of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Congressman Schultz.
As you and I discussed at the reception part of this meeting, it's Ward 6 that I represent, which is the, covers that intersection, or the southern half, this part below University Boulevard. And I just wanted to kind of concur what the mayor said a few minutes ago, in that between the two sector plans developed by Prince George's and Montgomery County, they're both, both of those sector plans focus on that University and New Hampshire avenue intersection. So I think that the little dot, well, it's a big dot now, and of course, these are schematic, or what you're saying is, is that they will lose their schematic aspects and become more defined or, you know, with boundaries and all of that. Well, and I'd be happy to, you know, having lived within walking distance of that, or in that dot, or where that dot should be, I can certainly offer my help to anybody who wants some information or guidance. But I guess what I'm trying to get to is that, I'm trying to understand the significance to a community, my community, that I represent, the citizens that live there, as being a activity center. In other words, if, in our infinite wisdom, as planners, we said, oh, well, this is not an activity center, what would be the consequence of that? Because we do have a master plan in Montgomery County, we have sector planning, we have new CR, mixed-use zoning, that's pretty sophisticated in how it's going to regulate, we have urban design guidelines. And it certainly is nice to have the Region Forward, you know, designate this, but I'm not sure what we gain or what we, or the absence of which we would not gain by being designated as an, and I'm wondering if you can help me understand that.
Again, I think it really is an issue of, these are places that local communities have already designated as a priority place, be it for redevelopment, reinvestment, or in some cases, you know, future growth. There are some places, I'll be honest, you know, outside the Beltway, where these are areas that there's no there there right now, but in, you know, a master plan, a comp plan, if something is anticipated. I really think the big issue is really the concept of working within limited resources. And if it is a decision for investment for, you know, the need for affordable housing, or where to cite, you know, a recreational facility, I'm just sort of free associating, you know, things off the top of my head, does this give you a sort of spatial lens, perhaps building on the research that we have of where some of those gaps are, to make these individual centers become more complete communities? It's not a perfect one-size-fits-all sort of, you know, cookie cutter approach. It's just sort of a lens at looking for, you know, how to really make these places, you know, be all that they are aspiring to become.
I'd just say that these, this activity center certainly is an incomplete community that has so much potential that has not been realized there, that it's remarkable that it hasn't seen the kind of new development that, yet, and I'm sure that it will come, not sure when exactly, but there's tremendous potential. And if this activity center designation can focus scarce resources, I encourage developers to do what it is they're going to do according to the master, sector plans, then more power to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Congressman Brown, did you have a comment or question? Okay. If you could remind me, remind us, what opportunities the city has to be more involved in the Region Forward Coalition, the Region Forward process? I don't remember whether, you know, kind of what the status of the Coalition is as far as the, within the organization of COG. A lot of the planning stuff used to be a policy committee. I think that's kind of changed, and if, so that if anybody up here wants to know more or be more involved, they know kind of how that might happen.
To your last point, both the planning directors and the housing directors, you know, the local. know, the local staffs are essentially the, you know, the technical resources to the policy committee. I'm actually drawing a blank at this moment to see, was someone from the city actually appointed? We do, as we do with all of our technical and policy committees, you know, ask for, you know, elected officials to participate. It's a challenge. We do only meet quarterly, and we'd actually, probably more frequently, so Mr. Mayor may raise his hand.
Yeah, ahead.
Okay, you're on it? Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and if, if, let's say, Councilmember Schultz was interested in kind of knowing more, or being more involved, or coming to meetings, it's perfectly okay for other people to come and participate? Good, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you both very much for coming, and it's good to know where we are in this process and what the schedule is. We will now move to the second presentation of the evening, and that's the Emergency Preparedness Committee Report. And we have some representatives from the committee. And welcome to the chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for having us here tonight. Greatly appreciate it. Unlike our more full annual report, this is just kind of a mid-year check-in, and also we've got a number of things planned for Preparedness Month, which is September, and just wanted to share that with the council, and if you have any feedback or suggestions. The first thing is, we'll be updating our website, just to let folks know that this is Preparedness Month, and we do have a number of links up there to resources for the county, and for FEMA, and certainly for MEMA, the Maryland Emergency Management Agency, just ways for folks to find out how they can be prepared. We also, this, this coming Sunday will be, we'll have a table at the Folk Festival, and I'm sure we'll see a number of you there. So we'll be there handing out our usual preparedness information. And this year, I'm hoping we'll be able to put this together. We might not have it ready in time for the Folk Festival, but we're working on a display kit. Right now, we have a lot of paper material, which is good, but a lot of folks, sometimes, you know, you're giving them a lot of paper information, and you kind of start to glaze over. So we're looking for the visuals to bring in the kids, and encourage the kids to kind of start thinking about preparedness as well, and make this a whole family dialogue. We're also going to work with Tacoma Cable to air the two PSAs that we produced last year, along with the Plan 9 video. They did this last year, when they aired it, I think, for the entire month, and so we're hoping that they will do that again, and probably even continue to do that throughout the year. Two questions that came up in regards to continuity planning for the city, and we're, so the committee wasn't quite sure about this, so we had some questions. If you folks have information on this that you can share, that'd be great. If not, we're happy to work with you and figure out how we can, how we can find out more about it. The first question was the power system for this building itself. There've been a number of discussions about which rooms have power, which rooms do not. This originally started when we were looking to hold a volunteer, to station a volunteer mobilization center here in case of a very large disaster, and then the conversation has kind of continued, and we were just trying to figure out, again, starting with which rooms are on the generator, which rooms are not, but then kind of what is the capacity of the generator? Is it going to hit, is it going to max out at a certain point, or not? I think kind of also with the Verizon 911, nobody expected Verizon's 911 to go down, and I don't think we expect this facility to go down, but it's always good just to check and double-check. That's a whole part of business continuity, making sure that we're able to continue normal operations. The other question was brought, excuse me, that was brought up, was where does the computer information from the city's computers, where is it backed up? And how is that, how is that recovered if something happens to the system itself? So, just a couple of questions, and happy to work with you folks to find out the answers if, you know, if you know. Lastly, a couple things, we wanted to remind you folks that the committee does have three open positions, and if you have any of, any residents that you know that might be interested in participating on the committee, we would love to have them come join us. Our meetings are the second, Thursday of every month, in the Hydrangea Room at 8:30 a.m., bright and early. And I'm happy to talk to folks. They're welcome to contact me, and just to talk about what the committee does and how they can be a part of it. Oh, also wanted to remind you that the committee members are available to do presentations on preparedness and how to prepare the community. So, any of your community groups, if they're looking, if they have regular meetings and they're looking for something to fill the agenda, we're happy to come out and speak, whether it's in September for Preparedness Month, or pretty much any time of the year, we're happy to come out and talk. And lastly, I guess, Jesse, we discussed the proclamation, but I don't know, did I spoil this?
It's her.
Yeah.
We did that.
Wonderful. Did I miss it?
You want it?
Sure.
It's already proclaimed.
Right. Appreciate your support of Preparedness Month. And that is my very short and sweet presentation. If anybody has any questions or comments on the questions that we posed, I'm happy to answer what I can.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for coming tonight, and for your ongoing good work on the emergency preparedness. It is, I think, one of the more important committees that we have, and I think it's unfortunately unappreciated, or maybe it's fortunate it's unappreciated, because it just means that we haven't needed to be prepared, or at least we haven't realized how much we need it. You had some good questions. I think they're fairly simple to answer, and I would just ask the city manager to please follow up with the answers to those. I don't think it's going to take much time at all.
Right. I think I know them, but I won't.
I think I do too, but I let you be more accurate. Thank you. And thank you.
Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you for your report. Just a few questions. Have you guys thought about building captains for major apartment buildings?
We have thrown the idea about, not specifically of just apartment buildings, but of captains within neighborhoods, and it's kind of been an ongoing discussion that we are looking into and haven't quite gotten there. And I know at one point, the police department was looking at doing something, I think, similar, not necessarily for emergency preparedness, but I think general neighborhood prepared, neighborhood safety. So we wanted to see how we connected the two, because it didn't make sense to have two different groups trying to do the same thing. We never quite were able to follow through on that, but, you know, maybe this is, maybe it's worth starting smaller with the apartment buildings.
Right. Another question I have is your notification system. Are you collecting cell phone numbers? Are you doing text messages? How are you getting the information out to people?
Mainly.
Other than cable?
Sure.
Because I don't have cable.
We do, we have a table usually at the fairs, so the Folk Festival will be at the Street Festival, and then there is Tacoma Alert, but we don't necessarily send out general preparedness information through that. Usually that's more reserved for thunderstorm coming, tornado watch, tornado warning, those kind of things. That's, that's kind of about it. If you have other suggestions, I'd be happy to.
I just think, you know, now that everybody has a smartphone, you know, you should take advantage of pushing data to people.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I guess my final question is, you know, during the Duraco, the big storm, and people didn't have power, how did, did you guys have any ideas of how to take people that might live in apartment buildings, or other communities in the city, and bring them into the community center? I mean, were you, did you guys think about using the buses that the city has, and pickup points, designated pickup points around the city that people can go to? And once people are here, are you thinking about feeding them, or?
One of the things about the committee, and it's, this is another one of those ongoing discussions, about how physically active we can be as far as organizing, organizing buses, organizing feeding. I would say that is probably a little bit outside of our scope, and potentially something that we could work on with the council, or with the city manager, and I'm not sure about which other groups. I mean, that's certainly, I don't know, even know who's responsible for the buses. Is that rec? Or?
We have a, we have a bus for rec. I think, you know, there certainly are cases when, when we've had significant snowstorms, when people might be in immediate danger, that the police department can respond, ambulances can respond and take them to a safe place. It's probably not the right time to go into all of the things about using this building, but there are many requirements about what you have to have on site to be able to actually sustain people, other than just as a drop-in warming center or drop-in cooling center, that have all kinds of issues related to people with disabilities, people with mental problems, animals, varieties of things, which there are very good facilities for, but it's fairly complex.
Okay.
And, and that is definitely beyond the scope of the committee.
And I'll just add that, my understanding is, it's beyond the scope of this building to be able to comply with those things, therefore, this building has not been designated a place, as a place for people to come and stay. It's kind of much lighter duty than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer. I, you know, my heart is in the Emergency Preparedness Committee, because it's a place where I had to resign when I got elected, which was, was something that I wasn't real thrilled about, but I really appreciate the work you're doing. I, I know I always wanted to somehow set up a neighbor-to-neighbor program, where neighbors, and I know we, you talk about it at the meetings, where neighbors look out for each other, because for years, we talked about communication. Once the electricity's down, all you've really got is two tin cans and a string. There's not much else, you know, that can get ahold, you can get ahold of people. At this point, smartphones, I know when the duratio happened, there were enough smartphones on Sherman Avenue when a tree hit somebody's house, that people were actually, you know, at 11:30 at night, people actually had smartphones and went, went down to the property and assisted the woman with, trying to, you know, secure the water not getting into our, into our home, and, you know, doing the best we could in the dark. I did not stay. I thought a 70-year-old woman was not going to do well walking around on a roof in a pouring down, driving rainstorm at night. I just lent them lanterns. But I really do appreciate the work you've done. You didn't mention National Night Out, the Emergency Preparedness Committee is always in partnership with one of the citizens' associations and the American Red Cross, and has been at National Night Out over the last three or four years. It's also at the street fair, at the city, the street fair, handing out materials. And what's interesting, in, in the moments where we haven't had a hideous disaster, or no lights, or something like that, people aren't really interested, but in the, in the times right after, like Snowmageddon, or the ice storm the next year, or I think this year, probably the duratio, really caused people to want to know. You were here tonight, that my tip tonight was, always know where the flashlight is for total cave darkness, because if in the middle of the night, all the lights go out, or just, you know, just when you're kind of hanging out, all the lights go out, if you don't know where the flashlight is, you can't really go forward from, from that point. So that's, that was tip one, along with, you know, making a plan and having a kit prepared, which are both important.
All excellent tips, and in addition to knowing where the flashlight is, knowing where the backup batteries are.
All the backup, yeah, I forgot, you know, when the duratio hit, I was told by my brother, we had a whole, a plethora of D-cells, and when, when push came to shove, we had three. So I had to go out and source up about, you know, 32 more D-cells, which I was able to do, but it was, you had to, you know, do it on a wing and a prayer. So, yeah, you need your D-cells, your C-cells, and your double As, and triple As, and know where they are, so you can get your hands right on them.
Thanks for calling down with a bus.
It's on record now, buddy.
But what you didn't mention was your wind-up flashlight.
Yeah, your wind-up, yeah.
Or your wind-up, yes.
And your wind-up, yeah, your wind-up radio. You also, you know, fighting over the one radio in the house, that's the wind-up radio, isn't fun either, to, who gets it, who grabs it and throws it and hides it from the other people, so.
We're learning more about the dynamics in that house, we need to know.
We're learning more about why we don't house people in the community.
Absolutely. I know, I mean, for, for years, poor Ed Corey, I'm sitting at one of the, like, "Why can't we have a shelter at the community center?" And, and he, one day, just, you know, went through what you have to do to have a shelter. I mean, I kept saying, what, are we chaff liver down here in Tacoma Park? Because the main shelter is usually Richard Montgomery High School, which is way up county. I think since the volunteer building is moved off of, it was on Wayne Avenue, I think, and that was one of the places where they shelter people.
On the left.
Yeah. But it's a big deal. A shelter is a really huge, beyond your even wildest imagination, to set up a shelter and to secure it, to make sure that it's, it's secure. I think this year, for the first time, Montgomery County actually has got shelters where you can take your animals.
Yes, actually, I think it was starting last year, but, but again, like a human shelter, it is very involved to set up.
To set up an animal shelter.
The Flower Recreation Center is kind of the temporarily designated pet shelter. They're hoping to be able to move it closer, so that we're actually housing pets and humans in the same area, so that it's easier for people to take care of their pets, and you don't have to worry about shuttles back and forth between the two. But we do have the county animal response team, which is able to go out and help support an animal shelter, and we have three trailers filled with crates, and leashes, and water bowls, and all sorts of things that you need to house mainly dogs and cats, but other small animals as well.
I, I know, when you're getting prepared for anything that you know is coming, duratio, who knew? It just, just dropped on us. But, but when it's a hurricane, you start preparing your personal medications, knowing where there's going to be a refrigerator, if you need insulin, but you also need to prepare your animals, you know, you have to take care of the animals' medications as well, and, you know, where are you going to put the, the actual, any meds that have to stay cold, like insulin, and what are you going to do with them, and how are you going to handle them? It's, it's a wild, a wild ride, actually.
And, sure, and I did hand out the hurricane preparedness handout as a little reminder on that. Just, again, with Tropical Storm Isaac having just come through, it could have come straight up the coast, it could have gone anywhere, thankfully, it didn't come here, but, you know, certainly hurricane season is not over yet, and I think we're, we're now up to K, was the last one, but still plenty of letters in the alphabet to go in a couple months.
Just 30 seconds. With the last hurricane that hit New Orleans last week, there were experiments done with animal shelters. As we all know, the bad hurricane a few years ago, that that's, a lot, a lot of people didn't leave their houses because of their animals. And this time, there were shelters set up for animals that were close to the shelters for the other victims, and I, and definitely, I hope that, I'm sure that'll be looked at, and discussed, and reevaluated with the animal shelter situation, and I'm hoping that the information gets up to Montgomery County and us, and I'm certainly going to look at it, because it's a very important point. point. It always bothered me in Katrina, that's why a lot of people stayed, was because of their animals. And I spoke with people who were directly, rescuers directly involved in Katrina, and they told me stories. And the animal shelters this time with, they had at least 6,000 people sheltered in Mississippi and Louisiana. The shelters seemed to work out fairly well, but we'll certainly wait for an after study on that. Hopefully, we can learn something from that, because it's an extremely important point.
Councilmember Schultz.
I want to thank you. Jennifer, thank you. First thing I want to say is that I will make an effort to see if I can't encourage some people from Ward 6 to get on the committee.
Great, thank you.
That's a promise, to do what I can in that regard. Members of the committee, within your committee discussions, is there any discussion about advancing the idea of neighborhood safety contacts?
Again, we've, it's one of those, it's one of those discussions that we have a lot and we have not had a lot of traction. We have two of our esteemed members who would be happy to chat a little bit more about that.
The neighborhood safety contact issue has come up year after year after year, and we have gotten as many as 50-some-odd members who would sign up. The problem is that you can't keep them active during the year, during the times when, you know, when, when the heavens are not falling on you. And they just lose interest. You know, what we have tried and what we probably will be trying is to roll that role into another one where the people are kept active, you know, so, you know, as it's been said, and it's been said again and again, when the emergency happens, everybody's interested. Three months later, you know, the interest falls away. As far as shelters are concerned, during the Snowmageddon, shelters were open. People didn't show up for the shelters, you know. It's, it's the interest part that's critical. It says, how do you keep the people interested? How can you do something with them? How can you roll them into another activity? And that's where it falls down, and it has.
Well, let me just say this, is that every kind of event, we can call it a disaster or stressful situation or whatever, is, is unique. I mean, we, we have a piece that you've given out tonight on hurricane preparedness, prepared by the American Red Cross, and that's great. But we all know that there's just a, any number of kind of crazy things that can happen in a community. Having, all of us having lived through 9/11, and you read about crazy things going on across the United States in the news every day. And, and so it's impossible for us to prepare for any kind or all kinds of so-called disasters, we use sort of a generic term. But when they do happen, all the technology that we have, sort of we all get thrown back to 1930s technology, because we don't have phones, we don't have power, we're snowed in, we can't get, use our vehicles, and on all these kinds of crazy things. And one Snowmageddon can be different than another Snowmageddon. So it can drive you crazy. And very, and I, I know that being on the committee has to be at times like a feeling of overwhelmingness of, of how do you encourage people to be prepared? It just seems to me, having served on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee for, with you, Andy, and you as well, is that, you know, the one common denominator to all of these things is communication, is that when something happens, whether, you know, it's a huge wreck on Metro, that where a whole bunch of people get killed on the, just south of Tacoma Park, people are anxious, or it's an airplane crash or something like that, people want to know what's going on, what am I, what can I do, what should I do, or should I just sort of not worry about it? Doesn't affect me. I don't know, could be a whole range. And it seems, I mean, I've thought about this a lot, as I know you have too, is that the communication business, when we're without our technologies, we can't turn on the cable because there's no TV, and, and what, what do you do? How do you communicate? And it really gets back, as you know, I'm speaking to the choir here, to being able to have people-to-people communication. And you can't have mass communication, if everybody talking to everybody, there needs to be a chain of command, just like in the police department, there's a chain of command, because it's the only way you can enforce safety. I still, to this day, having thought about it for years, that the neighborhood safety contact scheme is something that is essential. I know that at one time, and I have a copy of it at home, we had, there's a Neighborhood Safety Contact Manual, it was about an inch thick, two inches thick, whatever. And I, I just still think that that is something that needs to be established in some manner or another, so that people in the city, residents, know who to talk to in order to get valid information. That's all I wanted to say at this point.
That's a, that's a big project, and I agree with you, and I still have that manual from, from 10 years ago, that Andy Kellerman and Wolfgang Merger, Dr. Merger wrote. I can't agree more with you about the communication aspect, and, and to Andy's point, to keep the volunteers interested, and we've discussed this, I'll be very brief, but is, I think, some training, first aid, CPR, things like that, inviting people to our meetings, was what we used to do with the Neighborhood Safety Contacts. And we've been talking about it in the, our meetings, and then it came up tonight earlier about the public safety contacts kind of combining with the emergency preparedness contacts. It's a silly analogy, which has been thrown around for a long time, but you're right about communication. And the other thing, don't forget, with the battery-powered op, battery-powered radios and the wind-up radios, WTOP gives out some of the best information. But as per communication in the city, it is nice to have block captains or whatever you want to call them, to communicate, but that really has to be coordinated, because you can get the wrong information out very quickly, and that has to be coordinated by an emergency preparedness, an emergency manager.
Yeah, I understand all these things. I think there's tremendous potential for exploration in this thing.
Absolutely.
But now's not really the time to do that. I just wanted to emphasize, bring, bring that point up.
Well, we're, we're extremely lucky here, because in my opinion, we had one of the best professionals in the area standing right next to me and helping to set up one of those of organizations, Jennifer Curtinides, who was basically the director of, what are you, director of?
I'm not a director.
It's on your title.
No.
Anyway, she works with the Red Cross and works with the volunteers when it comes down to emergencies, so somebody I've learned a lot from.
Okay.
Coordinator?
Yeah, not a director.
Well, close enough.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll take a short break.
I wasn't sure I interpreted your noise correctly.
Good evening Tacoma Park, I'm coming to you live from tonight's city council meeting with a reminder about this weekend's folk festival. It's on Sunday at the Tacoma Park Middle School from 10:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Thank you Pat. And just want you to know you can always catch us the meetings here every Monday night at 7:30 p.m. except for tonight's because of the Labor Day weekend. On Wednesdays from 10 a.m. and also at 8 p.m. and Fridays at noon. Alright, well I'm Regina Reese for City TV and we'll be continuing on with tonight's meeting.
Where's Jared?
He had to go to the restaurant.
We'll start anyway. Ready to go back? Okay, we're back. And running a little behind but maybe we can move quickly through the remaining items. The first one, we're back in special session and we have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for services for the demolition of 36 Philadelphia. Who wants to tell us where things are on that one? Ms. Daines?
Good evening. As noted in the council's memorandum, the city's been given authority to demolish the property of 36 Philadelphia Avenue. The house was condemned and if any of you have been around the back recently, it's pretty much falling apart due to a variety of weather factors as well as the earthquake and general neglect. We've received authorization from the Historic Preservation Commission to demolish the structure and an illegally constructed accessory building towards the back of the lot. We've issued bids, received two proposals, and are recommending that the contract be awarded to Excalibur Site Services, Inc. They were the lowest bidder at $21,095. We've worked with them in the past for the demolition of a house on Allegheny and I found them to do an excellent job.
I remember them. I didn't remember it was them, but I know they did a good job on Allegheny.
Yeah, they've changed their name since, but they did an excellent job.
Would somebody like to move this ordinance?
I'd like to move it.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Council discussion? Councilmember Grimes?
I'll just note that the demolition of this house, given the state that it's in, has the support of all of the surrounding neighbors in Ward 1 along Philadelphia Avenue.
And I know it has the support of former Councilmember Robinson Grant who lives directly behind.
Will they be recycling any of the materials?
Yeah, that's what's... No.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, this is a single reading ordinance. Real quick, please call a roll. Aye?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously. We have another single reading ordinance on our special session agenda which awards a contract for the executive search services for selection of the new city manager. And the council looked at the proposals from seven firms and we discussed them all and we decided that the most responsive one was from the Mercer Group. We have a corrected ordinance that was at your place at the DIAS which corrects the amount for the not to exceed amount. And I'll also add that the current city manager corresponded with the president of the Mercer Group to get his input on what it might cost if there were additional site visits made and he observed that he had included three site visits rather than two in his bid. And he will honor that. Would somebody like to move this ordinance?
Move it.
Moved by Councilmember Seaman, second by Councilmember Smith. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, it's a single reading ordinance. Real quick, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Gander's Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Phillips?
I'll abstain.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Okay, that passes with one abstention. And the final item on our agenda this evening is a continuing discussion of council compensation for the council to be elected in 2013. Let me just make sure. I guess the city clerk want to say anything about this or not?
No, only that what was provided in your agenda packet is pretty much exactly the same as what was provided before and my understanding was that you wanted to wait until Councilmember Smith was seated on the council before determining which way to go with this.
Okay. I'll start out. I've given this some further thought. If you recall, the last time this came up, I had some issues with if we wanted to go ahead and do as the committee recommends and add some insurance coverage. I thought that it was kind of strange that we might end up with potentially some council members taking the, electing for that coverage. And if it was half of the cost of the family coverage at the current rates, that would be $10,449 which is $449 greater than the salary and that it would have a disparate benefit for people who needed that. It would greatly increase their compensation but for other council members who didn't need that, who have current health insurance coverage, it would cause a great disparity. As I thought about that, I looked at the information provided here and when I looked on page seven in our packet for the questionnaire, and this was question two, how important were these considerations when you were thinking about running for office in the city? And there were a number of factors that were highly, that were under high consideration as people were thinking about it. The one that had the lowest, that had the least consideration was availability of healthcare benefits. Then, when you look at various issues about compensation in the remaining questions, there didn't seem to be a very good consensus of opinion about increasing compensation, whether that was important, whether it would affect the diversity of candidates running. And finally, when I looked at the attachment C, which is the salary survey results, I noted that in the jurisdictions, many of the jurisdictions that do offer some kind of healthcare, there are asterisks next to a number of those where they basically say, "But the official pays the full cost." So as I was thinking about kind of reconciling what seems to be the case in most other jurisdictions, what seemed to be important to people, and thinking about a way to try and make some proposal that might be more even compensation to council members and yet take into effect the importance of healthcare coverage and the option to buy into the city's basic health insurance plan, what I thought about was suggesting that what we might want to do is offer that the city would offer, as it does now, for council members to be able to participate in that basic health insurance plan and that what would be offered would be coverage for the single coverage. And if the council member wanted to take advantage of that and have it for family plan or so, or parent-child or husband and wife, whatever those various levels are, that that would be on the council member to come up with the full cost of that. In my mind, the option that I thought was the fairest was to offer 50% of the single coverage that the city would pay. And in the case of the current costs, that would amount to $3,566. I thought that was reflective of the fact that the council is not considered to be full-time but, and we're not compensated as full-time and that that would reflect that approach in the benefits. And the way I came up with making it so that it was kind of an even compensation to the council was if a council member did not elect to participate and get that coverage by the city, that the city would then deposit the equivalent amount in a deferred comp plan, like a 457 plan, and that therefore all council members could have kind of equal access to the same compensation package. So I would offer that as a possible way to implement some of this recommendation in a more even and fair manner and reflecting the reality of the council being considered to be part-time and the results of the survey that the committee did on what was important to people in running for the council. And I would invite comment from my colleagues, see whether you think that's a good idea or not. Councilmember Schultz?
Your idea sounds reasonable to me. I was struck by the fact of looking at the survey. Now, I understand that the, for those who don't have this information in front of them or are listening, is that this survey was a total of 13 respondents. You know, so this is not like the, some sort of survey that you get on the telephone where they say, oh, there's an error factor of plus or minus 3%. This is a survey of people and the writers of this, members of this committee acknowledged that fact. The respondents were a select group of people who have thought about running for city council, have people who have actually run but not served, current members, some current members of the council, and former mayor or members. And that's, but out of that, only one of the 13 respondents, which is eight, constitutes eight percent, felt that availability of healthcare benefits was an important, would be important factor for thinking about running for this, for the office. But yet, notwithstanding that response, the committee came up with this recommendation that health benefits be provided, which I think is, just doesn't seem to add up. Doesn't make sense when it seems like it was the least important thing on the whole list of possible reasons for somebody thinking about running. So I'd be, I share the kind of questions that the mayor had just, has just articulated. I'm open to other possible ways in which we might be able to provide some sort of benefit, but to do so in an equitable manner that serves all council members reasonably well. I'm just curious to see what others might have to say on the subject.
Councilmember Smith?
I think I could support your proposal, Mr. Mayor, but what, the thing that I've come to, you know, only serving on the council for such a limited period of time, and Councilmember Schultz describing only that one person brought up the fact that healthcare is important, is council compensation. So we have four times as many people saying that compensation is important, but we're not really considering any vehicle to address compensation for the council, other than a annual increase that is tied to the CPI. Because I don't see this as a part-time position. It may be advertised as that.
You couldn't bat out already?
Yes. But there is nothing
Part-time.
Part-time about being on the council. And I think with the economy, I don't foresee it improving anytime soon, means that resources and monies from the county and the state are going to be even more limited. So we'll all have to be out with our hats and begging for continued support for Tacoma Park. And that's something you can't do part-time.
Recognizing that the committee also said that they recommend that the, aside from the CPI increase, that there be no increase in the pay.
Right.
And so at least this adding some, a piece like I proposed would increase overall compensation. It's just kind of, you know, how it gets arrived at. And it's actually a fairly sizable increase, given that under the current figures, it would increase it by, what did I say, $3,000 and something?
$3,566.
That's a, for council members, that's an increase of 30-some percent.
Yes.
Slightly less for the mayor. Other comments? I don't see any lights coming on.
You had...
Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. You had, it sounded like you made a proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wondered if you could outline that again because there was a lot said building up to that.
Right, okay. It would be to, do as the, the piece that I didn't kind of specifically state was to roll in the piece, the recommendation about the increase in the CPI, so that there's a mechanism for increasing. I'm, you know, happy to do that. I'm not wedded to it. And then the more significant piece is offering the base health insurance plan 50% of single coverage amount. And if people want to take that as the city contributing toward their participation in the city's health insurance plan. And then any additional costs for like a husband-wife or parent-child costs, or enrolling in the dental insurance plan or the vision insurance plan, that that's available to everybody, but that the rest of that would be at the council member's cost. And that if a council member did not want to enroll in the city's basic health insurance plan with the city contributing under the current year cost structure, $3,566.40, that that same amount would be put into a 457 deferred comp plan.